Welcome to Hexham Town Council. The full council meeting of Monday, the ninth of October, twenty twenty-three, six o'clock here in Prior's Hall with Hexham Abbey. Derek Kennedy, the Mayor of Hexham, so we will start the agenda. And first of all, we are going to invite Cathy Newton and Tony May. So we're going to do a quick presentation on the Museum of the Moon, which is currently on display in Hexham Abbey. Would you like to start and come to the club?
About thirteen fifty, actually. What's it been?
Tonight.
We thought we were talking about thirteen fifty. Do you think that we can talk about the moon as well?
Oh, I've got the tone.
It's thirteen fifty on the agenda.
That's right.
It's not. It's in the morning plan.
Yeah. No, what a lot.
So.
Let's start again, let's start again. What's the other six?
Let's start again, yeah. As you might us to say a little bit about the Museum of the Moon, can we just say a massive thank you to Hexham Town Council for their grant support? As you know, the Museum of the Moon has been open now for ten days. And on the first day, a lot of the traders, the businesses reported that they'd had their best ever trading day of the year. I know it wasn't just the Museum of the Moon, there was the Farnum Festival as well. But there's a real feeling in the town that Museum of the Moon, Museum of the Moon has brought a buzz, has brought positivity. And people are telling us that they've come up for the weekend and they're staying at their hotels. So in terms of impact of your grant, we can see already. In the ten days that it's been open, we've had five and a half thousand visitors. We anticipated, I think, about twenty thousand, and we've had five and a half in the first week plus. So we know, we will, you know, write a report at the end, but we know it's going to be very, very successful for Hexham. We're hugely grateful for your grant support in that. So that's Museum of the Moon.
Yes, also no way for the second part of the year.
Yes. What we're going to talk about was thirteen fifty. So next year in twenty twenty-four, Hexham is having its thirteen-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday, which will be a massive thing for the town. We've got a whole year of events planned, starting in end of January with the Festival of Flame, going all the way through the year. And we've got, if we can pass these around.
Thank you.
If I could pass these round that way, that gives you a summary of what we're planning to do throughout the year. So we'll be kicking off with the Festival of Flame, which has happened in Hexham for two, three years. The funding for that can be extended through to February, so that will be the kind of launch of thirteen fifty with a service led by Dave, our rector. Then the Festival of Flame that you're used to. To link in with the moon, we're having an installation, if some of you remember the angels that we had a couple of years ago. We're having an installation of stars in the Abbey, which is going to be called Stars for Eternity. The idea being that we want to celebrate Hexham's stars, that being Wilfred, Andrew and Ethel Frieda. We want to invite people in the community to say, who is a star in their life, whom lights up their life, or who do they want to remember? And our ambition is to gather ten thousand stars that will be elevated for the Festival of Flame. And that's, you know, a great way of getting that community engagement with stars. There's, the Ethel Frieda Festival in June is something that we would really like Hexham Town Council's support in promoting it. We want that very much to be a town event rather than a Hexham Abbey event. So our vision for that, we're working alongside the town, Hexham Community Partnership with Jazz. But we've got a vision that it will very much be food festivals, music, using the whole of the grounds of Hexham. And really, we're just wanting kind of your support in promoting that. I think that's sort of a midway point in the year for us. You say a little bit now.
Fill in this bit if you like.
You say a little bit.
On this flyer, because it's, it's a project that's evolving. We've been working on this now for about six months, seven months. This is what we know we've got so far. One of the most important things that the Abbey want to do is, this is not, it's very much a self-supporting fund. We want to fund it by making it self-financing. So to do that, we've got three events which we've booked, which are fundraisers to cover marketing and any other little summaries. So the first thing, we're actually going to kick it off really early, is to talk about launching thirteen fifty, is that Emma Fish and James Birkin are going to do this November on the eighteenth. They're going to do a, an event which is based around, I think it's Joe Volutti, I think it's the American version of Dango Reinhardt, Stefan Gruppi. We had them at the festival a couple of years ago doing Hot Club Du Nord, and they're coming back and they're going to do this same sort of style, gypsy jazzy sort of thing, American style, Italian, that's how it all works. So they're going to do a fun, so that's one of the events where we think, well, whatever we make on that, that we can cover our costs and then put it into the marketing budget. The other two events is Bradley Kresic, instead of doing a nice big classical thing in February, he's going to do the Western Swing Phonia. So it's going to be a bit more gypsy jazz, bluegrass, a bit more flair to it, as well as some classical pieces. If you don't know Bradley Kresic, Bradley used to be the principal violinist of the Normandy Symphonia, and has got an international reputation. We're very lucky to get him. And it just slots in nicely as a date for him. So he's going to be able to do that before he misses off onto another tour abroad. So we've got that one in February to fundraise it. And then right at the end of it, of the festival, in November next year, Davey thinks we're going to, puts up with it. We're going to get the Tyne Valley Big Band. If you've never seen them, go to Corbridge Beer Festival in June. They are phenomenal. So you've got the big Tyne Valley, the full brass section with Barbara, his wife, doing the vocals. We've sort of kicked around the idea of a sort of like big American swing night in the Abbey, et cetera, et cetera. Might even get the North Transact, it's a little bit of a dance floor again. We'll see how it goes. But Dave's putting that all together. We hope to get a bit of extra traction on that, because if people didn't know, Dave was one of the trumpeters in the Sam Fetter gig at Newcastle, and it was brilliant. So he's agreed to do that. So those are sort of like three events, which will definitely sort it in the diary. They're going to be little fundraiser bits for the festival. And then we've already got Any Questions booked up in March, as you can see there. The June twenty-two, which Cath mentioned about the Ethel Frieda Festival, core music, we're hoping Jazz, when we were talking to Jazz about getting core music to help get bands together. Keep that local, keep it a very local Hexham Town event for Hexham Town people and using core. Three Choirs Festival, which is Newcastle, Corbridge and Hexham, Farnum Festival, we've got the Hexham Abbey Festival Music and Arts, we're going to do more. I haven't discussed this yet with the app, with the thirteen fifty group, but there is a little chat going on with the school at, Derek, you're on it by the night, Messinger, Messinger, the Twin Town. They're going to be coming over and we're thinking slot them in over in September when the festival's on and they can do a gig as part of the festival with the schools. And Q E H are up for it. So we're hoping actually to cover that, but we've not had a committee meet about that yet. But that's a plan. And that's valid, really, but there will be more things adding to it. I know the choir I sing in Antifon, we're going to be doing a joint concert with the Abbey Choir. So there'll be a bit of a different type of thing. So we're just trying to cover everything, bit of jazz, bit of blues, bit of this, bit of that, something for everyone. So that's the idea, and linking it with other events as they crop up during the year. I think that's where we really are at the moment.
I think it is.
What we wanted to do is get the traction of the town buying into it. I mean, I don't really have people coming in saying, what moon? What moon? And you go, that moon around the corner. But we've had a lot of people coming, as Cath said, from all over the place. I mean, there was a lovely lady the other night who came down from Ashington with a friend of hers from Australia, who is in her sixties and said, the only ever school trip she did as a child was Hexham Abbey. And this is her first trip back to Hexham since leaving Australia forty years ago. And she was just blown away by the whole thing. So it's getting that sort of traction wider, and that's where we need help. We need not just the Abbey promoting it, but it's a Hexham Town thing. I could be very controversial and say if it wasn't for Hexham Abbey, of course, Hexham wouldn't exist, because that's how it keeps off in six, seven, four, as a little church and then. So you know, you'd get somewhere to drink, somewhere to eat, some shelter, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a big thing of promoting it around the town. So that's really what I wanted to share with you, this idea of that it's not just a Hexham Abbey thing, it's a Hexham Town celebration, if that makes any sense. Anybody want to ask any questions? Please.
The Abbey is often a barrier because it's, it's a church in essence.
Yeah.
Do you envisage doing more outdoor stuff and welcoming people? The minute you say Abbey or any sort of institution, there's a natural resilience to it. And as part of your celebrations, attracting people who don't normally come to the Abbey would be quite exciting for us. That would be my first question. My second one would be, if this is self-funding.
Trying to make it as much as possible.
Right, since August, what happens if?
Yeah.
And if you were looking to have the town council support, obviously promotion and marketing is one. But I'd lean towards, and others might differ, almost launching it with you and putting some effort at the beginning, rather than an overall commitment, an open-ended commitment for the rest of the year, in case any of these didn't quite fall. I mean, what are your thoughts on both of those?
I think your first point about getting more people in, that's why we're using the Museum of the Moon as leverage. We can see straight away that we have engaged with a different audience to the people that would normally come to the Abbey. In terms of, well, diversity and all its forms.
Yeah.
And as part of that, we're inviting people that are coming to the moon to take part in this Stars for Eternity. And I think that's something whether, you know, you've got a faith or you've got a different faith, people can relate to that idea. So I think that's one of the ways we're trying to engage with different and diverse audiences. The Ethel Frieda Festival, we want that to be very much outdoor-based, town-based, sustainable, local, you know, sort of linking in with some of the other things like Transition Time Day. What was your second?
Well, I was going to say, there's two elements to that, also just to think about. So Friday night, as part of the Museum of the Moon, we had a band called Prism doing Pink Floyd's fiftieth anniversary Dark Side of the Moon album plus tracks. There was over five hundred people in the Abbey, who, some of them had never been in the Abbey and they were going, they just loved it. And we'd like to get more of that, still the thing going. I think the fact, any questions? I mean, you can think of the Abbey as just, as two parts of it. Yes, a church, but it's also a larger space in Hexham, and we're short of large spaces in Hexham. The Young Thieves are coming, part of Queen's Tour are hiring it in a couple of weeks, a couple of months' time, December, I think, the Young Thieves are playing here. But that's, the Queen's Tour are using the building as a venue.
That's good.
So we're trying to do a lot of that, you know, it's not just the Abbey, but it's a space within Hexham that's part, you know, it is the Abbey, obviously, but it's also to be used for other things.
As a supplementary to that, will you, will you be engaging in other faiths, other churches, other community groups as, as part of this?
There has been discussions about this, and I haven't got the details on it, because it's been evolving as we're going along. The first thing was helping get some events going. The BBC is a very interesting organisation to deal with when you want to see if you can get them to come to your town. And a lot of you will know this better than I do, but what you do find is you ask and they might come back to you. And you ask, so the actual invite lists have been Any Questions, Kitchen Cabinet, BBC Radio Four in the mornings on a Saturday morning, Ant each road show, which we'd have to then encompass if we got, if they came back. The scene, we need to be coming out, we need a big venue here, folks. So then we're trying to make it outreachy as much as possible. Those are ones that we should sort of, we'll talk to them, we'll talk to them, we'll talk to them. Radio Four came back straight away with any questions.
And I think we also need to kind of join up the thinking with the things that are happening in Hexham. So last year was the first Hexham Pride. The Abbey didn't really take part in that last year, but I think if that is happening again, we would very much like Hexham Pride to be right at the heart of this as well. So, you know, we are breaking down those barriers, that this is, this space, it's a, it's a community space for everyone, it's not just a parish church.
Okay, stay with me. Very treacherous, if you, obviously more oxygen, yes.
Can I just quickly say something, very, very quickly, the Ethel Frieda in June was specifically chosen as June because one resumes, the bluegrass festival will be July because it was so good. Do it again. So you don't want to cram and clash. So we've been thinking the dates out, looking around at what's been going on in Hexham. That was the other part, sorry.
Sorry. Been holding a lot of people here, I was actually here for the last celebration. Nineteen seventy-four, I stood on the steps of the community church when the Queen came past. First time I've seen her, five yards from her, mind she was in the norm at the time, so I can't really see how much closer I'm that. So can I just, can I just give me apologies that I've probably not made in the next one? So I'm busy that day, unfortunately. I mean, I don't know whether you want, whether there's going to be any sort of referral back to when the Queen came or, I mean, an idea, wouldn't it? It would be nice if our son was to pop along as well, you know, so saying as, you know, mother, fifty years later, son.
We have asked a question at the meeting recently, has anybody got any archive material from the previous thirteen-hundredth in, in Haswell? Because we haven't gone out.
Well, a client obviously will have.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Hexham is.
And what do we do about having something for this one? So there's an archive for the next one, which will be fourteen-hundredth anniversary. So we've, we've been talking about it.
Yeah, well, I'm busy that day, is it? But it would be nice to have a little look, but I would, I would try to.
I think that's a really good idea, actually, to, to put out, you know, to get anybody to reflect on the previous.
When we do do that, on other things that are happening in town, we do have, and we do have sort of memories of the past. I mean, I remember Peter interviewing us and a few others of the road there, and actually I mentioned that story one week. So yes, that would be, that would be an idea.
There was a little, the comment we were making, we'll get a bit of a backbone going. And then, rather than say, oh, look what we've done, Hexham Town Council, right, it's, we're at that point now, we've got a bit of a backbone, we've got a bit of an idea. Now let's go and talk to Hexham Town Council and say, we've got a bit of a structure here, we need your input as well and advice and ideas, et cetera, et cetera, to make it work.
Well, it's not that it wasn't a good day, but you did get half-baked you off school, so that.
There you go.
Yeah. You also didn't come up with a new backhoe.
Any, any other questions? Right, I'll, I'll take some questions. So in all this, this is all fantastic, anything that celebrates the history of Hexham, I'm very much favorable of that. But it's one of the things I've always been very keen on, is actually promoting the history of Hexham. Because I think we've got such an exciting and interesting tale to tell. And, and many people don't, don't know it, obviously I was deeply involved in the eight-hundred years of the Hexham market. And I, and I just wonder if it's worth sharing thoughts myself and Claire Mowandy, who's now the, who actually helped organise, which is now based at the cinema, Fordham Cinema. And because we've, we've got a huge amount of lessons learned, that, that were captured from, from all of that, you know, promotions, you know, how much you want to spend. I mean, I think we, in the end, spent nothing, but we were very, very clever in helping advertise it through being very intelligent and using all that means. You know, we'd be happy to conversely evolve that, so.
Absolutely, because we were talking about those little stickers you put in all the town. And we said, wouldn't it be great, thirteen-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, Hexham Abbey, Hexham?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The Ethel Frieda Festival, food, drinks, store, well, you know, it'd be a no-brainer, get the farmers' market involved, could we get people dressed up in medieval costume? You know, could we get, could we get back to Saxon times in Hexham?
Yeah, certainly, certainly, one of the things I would suggest is off the top of your head here is actually have a singular day, where, where you're actually doing that. And you can see, you know, have a, have a singular day where you've got a great day to celebrate, an outdoor event, similar to the eight-hundred. Get a number of bodies involved, you know, because there was a few that we paid, some that we didn't pay, it just, it just had it as a, as a, as a, as a festival.
And the obvious one would be that Ethel Frieda Day, June twenty-second.
And if, you know, if you wanted to leave the Hexham, you know, bring it up, bring a Hexham outdoors to everybody.
That's the whole thing, we want to make sure it definitely gets out, it's not a Abbey thing, it's a town thing.
Absolutely.
Driven by the fact that that building is, well, underneath it, so.
Right, so, so I'd be happy to have a, have a conversation with, with no.
That would be great. And certainly conversations about lessons learned.
Yeah, yeah.
We did that with the Museum of the Moon, and going to all the settings that have had it. And that's been a really useful conversation in terms of how we teach it, et cetera, manage the flow, so that would be really useful, thank you.
Bye, Bill.
Is that, is that it? Have you got to do it then for that present? The twenty-second of June, right?
It's on the phone, yeah. We had to pick a day to work, yeah. We had to work dates out, obviously, with other things that are going on, just normal life. And we went, well, that's the, the Abbey turned around, that's the really, if you're going to do it in June, that's the weekend to do it, folks, because of this, that and the other, so.
Good, thank you.
And certain things slotting like the Festival of Flame, sort of slot that in. Jane Pickett, who, who may have run it anyway, she, she runs the Northumbrian Magazine, Northumbrian Magazine? Yeah, so Jane runs the Northumbrian Magazine, she's doing the marketing schedule, that's her, sort of handles it. And she's looking at, so she's got all the media, TV coverage, so she's looking at TV, all the magazines, because she's got all the contacts, so she'll push on that side of it. And then she's also designed a Hexham Abbey, but with a thirteen-fifty sort of like logo building to go with it underneath, just keep it very simple. So we're going to try and promote as much as possible, even if it's not in there, it'll end up being a thirty, if we throw something else in.
There's a certainty, well, for us, when we did the eight-hundred, we, we went to the high school and set the students, you know, it would be interesting. So those are the types of ideas.
I don't know if anybody went to the schools about with the Hexham Abbey Festival this year, but we had two hundred and fifty children, two hundred and twenty children from Hexham Town singing with Fianlanda on the Thursday. The Abbey was packed in the morning to keep the festival off. That was the taster for next year, because we want it bigger. We'd like to do that bigger, we'd like to do the, and that was done by through sponsorship, we'd like to see if we can, if the twinning thing works, we'll get them over as part of the Abbey Festival. So you make, everything we do, we want to try and do it bigger. That was the angle, that was the brief, whatever we do, do it bigger and a bit more special, so, and then add bits to it.
That's all right, just to give you a taste. And obviously, one last question.
Yes, please.
This is really good. But it takes an enormous resource in terms of manpower, as well as money. Who's going to run this? Is it, is it, is it a volunteer group of twelve people? Is it you two, is it part-time, are they going to get professionals in or?
We're not getting professionals in, there's, there's been a working group, initially Abbey people plus volunteers, so a team of four Abbey staff plus other volunteers. And we would love to open that working party to extend that to all the volunteers, but we won't be paying any professionals.
No. And have you got a budget for all this?
We, well, if you look at it, each one that we're trying to do is self-financing, we've not, we know the cost of certain events. We know the fee for Bradley, we know the fee for Emma, we know the fee for the Time Day Valley Band. The costings are minimal because they're doing us a favour. So we, we've got that bottomed out. The building, obviously, the resources, obviously, the Abbey, so that's good. We've got the mark, that, these fundraisers, the marketing budget, there are assessed figures for it, but it's evolving as we do it. And there are some funding you're doing, bits and pieces as well. We started on the funding bit for thirteen fifty, no, not yet. We've got some ideas to work on that bit. But it's not like, it looks a lot of money, but it isn't a lot of money because of the way we've worked it.
It's always difficult to get external funding.
Yeah, that's why you don't do it. But what we will be looking at is reaching out to the rest of the Abbey people, as we've done with the moon. Cath's got a staff badge, I've got a volunteers badge. So I'm not anything to do with the Abbey, I'm just a volunteer that's been doing the lighting for the moon. So that was my brief, if you like.
That's why I think it's really important that you kick-start it.
Yeah, yeah.
Possibly the help of the town council, rather than that ongoing commitment. If you get that momentum going forward, I think that'd be a real boost.
We will need help, particularly with the Ethel Frieda Festival after a day. We'd had a conversation with Jazz, so to get things.
Okay, one more question and then we'll get out of your way.
At the town council, we have a community engagement committee that meets once a month, so it'd be good to keep the communication bond open. Headed up by Susan, she's not here today. Just email, we'll just, and then we can just keep that going, she meets once a month.
It's going to be the final question, actually, from our end, is who do we reach out to, to say, we're doing this now, can we get some advice from you?
It's too sound, isn't it?
So, so, so we have to go through the clock?
Okay, fine.
So, so through the clock, through the clock, and then, and then we'll direct it to Sarah. Say, say for example, the lessons learned from the eight-hundreds, you know, I would say myself in Claire Mowandy, because obviously we were the main organisers of that. But we're obviously through the clock and then, and then we'll do that thing, this Mike mentioned, that we have a community engagement committee, which Susan. So we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll keep that in our, in our eyes.
I will say, I should have said this right, apologies for David Glover, the rector here, but he's got double booking tonight, so I'm playing the part. I am not, but he's already, you know, he's fully up to speed, this is, this is, he's driving, he wants to make this work, then throw it all back to Cath and then.
But thank you for letting us come.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Really exciting.
If anyone needs here, anybody wants to take the invite to others, then I think they're there. Good. Enjoy your meal.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Right, we now turn to item one on the agenda, which is to hear questions from Hexham residents regarding matters on the agenda or relating to Hexham. Any questions we could handle? Okay, okay, if you would like to handle, speak the name and it's a question of the big statement.
Okay, good evening, I'm Sarah Greenhill, Hexham resident, I've got a question about the upcoming agenda about divestment of pensions from fossil fuels. I would like to know who, if the elected representatives sit on the pensions committee of South Tyneside, who manage the pensions? And how are those people selected and how often are those selected?
Right, so, so, well, I can answer this, so it's really complicated. So Hexham Town Council has several members of staff, and they obviously get paid and, and they pay contribution through the local association, the pension scheme. They are paid via arrangement with the Northumberland County Council. So we essentially, as Hexham Town Council, pay the county council, and then they pay the staff. So that's, that's how it works, so the money is, is that, and that's how they're on the LGA. Now, there used to be, up until two, three years ago, a pensions committee on Northumberland County Council, okay? So that was fairly easy to really understand. And what that pensions committee would do is it had, the main one was obviously Northumberland County Council with several thousand members of staff, but there was also a Hexham Town Council, other parish councils who employ staff, other little smaller bodies. They all incorporated into the pot, and that pot was then invested in various bodies. I was chairing the faculty committee for three, five years, I was vice-chairing for four years, something like that, I've held so long, I was on that committee for a long, long time. And we would have many hundreds of millions of pounds, and we would invest in various, so it's a bit like, see, if I try and drive a deficit of you as an, you as an individual, it's a bit like you have a, see, you've got three thousand pounds in a fund. You know, you may go legally generally, I'll put it in the background, run this for the background. So you have, so there are several funds that you would invest in, you have people come in and say, right, we do this, we do that, we're, we're doing stuff in Southeast Asia, we're doing stuff on infrastructure, we're doing things on the lot. And you would interview them and go, right, actually, we think they're very good, invest with them. And they would, as the agent, and the money would be invested in, and you get the returns from. And they would, as the agent, and the money would be invested in, and you get the returns from that. Yeah. So it's obviously hugely complicated on that topic. Um, in recent times, pretty, let's say about three, four years ago, there was a decision for the county council to actually attach itself to. Um, the LA seven, that's the local, local government association seven, which is the seven northeast of east, okay? So that includes Northumberland. And what the reason why it ran out of the south. Um, so Tyneside is that they just had, it was just decided that they would run it out of there on all the call. As, as, as Northumberland, so Northumberland, North Tyneside, South Tyneside, Newcastle, da, 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 da. All corporate people gave to this central area. Um, so we think there's a pyramid, this pyramid is just getting higher. It, it, it got out of the pyramid. And from there, there's several people from the Northumberland County Council who sit on that committee. Along with others from the other councils, and they make all the financial decisions with regards to investments. So very, very complicated. A hierarchical structure, and that is how that operates.
And how are they selected was the question.
So the council decides who should represent Northumberland County Council, councillors. So the sixty seven councillors, we decide who should call. So we will send one or two or three people on the back of it, as we do with.
So the Hexham Town Council, no?
No, I'm a member of the county council also. So, so the sixty seven members of the county council will decide who will represent.
Thank you.
Uh, so, you know, um, obviously it's a significant amount of money, it's over, the funds over a billion pounds. So we're going to have a discussion on, I presume you're interested in the, um.
Also.
Also, you will, da, 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 da. So, so we'll, we'll have that debate on the, has that answered your question?
Yes, thank you.
I think probably a bit more. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Right.
I, I, I've come to hear.
Name, standard, name, name.
Janice, sorry, excellent. I've, um, I just, I've come principally, that is interesting information and great. I've come to hear what, what our local councillors have to say on this item and which is important. And I think I'm very glad that we've taken the step so far of getting it before the, uh, the town council. Because it's, it's an issue which of course is going to grow in importance. And it's very, very open just now. That's, I'm waiting to hear all information. If questions may follow.
Thank you. Any questions?
How are your comments? Uh, it's just so I maybe was sleeping on my scale, so I can sleep a bit easier at night. I was just wondering.
I find it always.
I used to get it away. I was just wondering, is the Tynanville Local Area Committee meeting, did you resolve the problem? With getting the drains emptied on the West Road?
I, 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 it's, it's a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, I thought there was one in the last.
Trying to get it clear.
It's not a, a, like a maintenance programme, that somebody goes and.
Respect from, so, well, you have this thing called Fix Nice Streets, which is this new.
Oh, yes, yes.
But I think this should be called Report Nice Streets, of course, to fix it.
I, I work in an environment where there's lots of, you have to have things right, health and safety and buildings. It puzzles me with more feedback of when these things, everyone getting done, whether every three years or three months or.
Cheers up for the end.
Right, I'd much appreciate this. Thank you.
Quite all right, I accept your apologies.
Anybody else? Right, good. Okay, um, right, apologies for absence.
Councillors Gurren, Hartman, Bell and Powell, Tyneside.
Yes. Declarations of interest. Four, to agree minutes of the town council meeting on eleven September twenty twenty three. I'll just go through those pages. So it's page two, page three, page four. Okay, permission sign. Any matters arising on the agenda or report? Page seven, to receive and accept the external orders report for twenty two. So I can look at.
Page number?
Nine. Nine. So we have here, so this is an annual, um, event in our calendar. Which is the auditor providing us with their opinion for the year end and the thirty first of March twenty twenty three. So. Um, anything, any commentary on that?
Now, can I just make one comment? That I think the people responsible for doing this have done a great job. Because of all the problems that we have, um, in terms of bringing the figures to the auditor. And I'm acknowledging the work done by local players in, in, in responsible. If we'd have missed this deadline, it would have been very hard for the town council in terms of legitimising what it does. So well done to all those concerned.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, there has been, there are still difficulties, I must say, but we got there in the end. Uh, so the, uh, the action here is a council's required is recommended to receive and accept the orders report as detailed above. Can I, can we accept that? Okay, thank you. That's accepted, Jane. Seven, item eight, to agree and re-adopt the health and safety policy. And that is on page eleven. Twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Is there any commentary on that?
No changes from last year, is there?
No, so it's the same as last year. So we've got a quite a stable. Um, policy on that? Do I need to sign this? No, just, yeah, it's just a great, thank you, thank you. Right, uh, the next item is to agree and re-adopt the business continuity plan. So business continuity plan. So we're looking at pages nineteen, twenty, twenty one. Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. And twenty seven and twenty eight, twenty nine, and page fifty.
Thirty.
And thirty one, sorry. Good. Everybody okay? Is that fine with that? Uh, ten is to agree and re-adopt the safeguarding policy. So that is on page thirty three. All right, uh, so our next item is number eleven, which is a proposal. Uh, by councillor Mike Dominique. Um, so Mike, what I want you to do is, um, to read out your, um, proposal. Okay, um, you can then say a few words. We'll then, we then need a second up for the, for the motion, because Mike's going to provoke, provide a motion. And then we enter into debate. So if you need any understanding of how that works, you actually have a, there's a simple rule in the back of your name tab there. So, so the motion, Mike, say a few words, we need a second edit, and then we start the debate. So we can have people talking, you know, through the chair. As we go to summing up, the motion, the person who brought the motion forward has the right to just say some summary words before we go to the vote. Okay, that's enough. Okay, over to you, Mike.
Okay, thanks. Um, yes, a motion. So, um, the motion is that investments by, by the time we are local government pension scheme. Should be included in the calculation of the town council's carbon footprint. And that investments in fossil fuels contradicts the ambition to achieve carbon, carbon zero by twenty thirty. The town council resolves to mandate its representative on the time and where local government pension committee. To call for an immediate review of its investment strategy to freeze any new investment in the top two hundred publicly traded fossil fuel companies. And divest direct ownership and any commingled funds that include fossil fuel public equities and corporate bonds by twenty twenty five. And then I've just got just a few words, a bit of, um, a bit of background.
So, so just to be clear, that's the motion stated in there. So, so that's the, the motion, okay? Right, so your university is all ready?
Um, right, so in twenty twenty one, Hexham Town Council declared a climate biodiversity emergency and a commitment to be met by twenty thirty. In twenty nineteen, the county council did the same thing. Um, the council, the councils are committed to ensuring force of energy decisions, budgets. And approaches to plan which are aligned with shifting to net zero by twenty thirty. The phasing out of fossil fuels can represent long term financial risks to holdings, but in this case, it, it, it doesn't. By looking at other councils that have done the same, there was a trend that's happening with other councils now. A lot of councils are taking their public monies in divesting from fossil fuels and historically, um, there's been no negative or positive impact. In fact, actual risk by having money invested in fossil fuels and fossil fuels is declining represents actually a financial risk. Um, the UN Energy Agency predicts that global demand will significantly fall by twenty thirty, leading, uh, leading to those oil and gas companies to do better. To underperform. Um, the former Bank of England governor, Mark Carney, warned that fossil fuel investments risk become stranded assets as investors, as investors exit the sector. Pension funds have a few additional duties to consider material risks of continuing, of continuing investment in fossil fuels. So there's, there's, there's an onus on, on the pension fund managers to, to, to look at this. Um, and the top, there were fifty UK local authorities that are exiting universities and the country's pension fund nest. Both committed to divesting fossil funds. And so currently we have, currently, the London County Council has, I think it's seven point nine, just under eight billion invested in fossil fuel companies.
Northumberland County Council has eight billion invested.
Out of the four, two point six one, which is about three percent.
So you see, so, so say that example, I'm not sure that's correct, to be honest.
Well, I, I went, there's a website called divestor.org.
It seems we've got eight, eight billion in directly in fossil fuels.
You can, you can check it. Well, that's what, that's, you can check my figures, but that's the website.
Yeah, I have.
So was that eight billion, eight billion?
Billion.
Eight billion.
Billion.
I'll check that, while, while you discuss that, I'll check it.
The turn, the turnover was only, uh, I said a billion a year?
I thought, I thought the last thing when I was on the chair of the, the, the committee, I'm sure we had. One point five billion in total in the, in the pension code. And that, and obviously all of that is not in fossil fuels, that totality of the fund.
You say, you say that NCC, all of that, the seven thing?
No, so the, the, the seven councils would be a lot more than eight billion.
So the one point, yeah, yeah, so the one point five.
Would be part of, of a greater sum, yeah, but it'll be much more than eight billion because the other councils are quite large, I would suspect. But I, I'm not, I don't know the figures exactly, but that's my memory of it. Anyway, um, so I, I think what I would suggest is probably just on the safe side here, Mike, is I would just forget about eight billions. I don't, I, I'm not, I really question that because this sounds so incorrect. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm likely to be challenged with that, but I, I just, it doesn't sound right to me. So I think, I think, think in the spirit of this, this is about the, the sum of, the sum of, or part of the pension fund is in the, um. Some of it is in fossil fuels, but not, not by a one shot. Right, so, um, I'm asking for a second up for that motion. Is there a second up for that motion? There's a second up for the motion, that's councillor Donald. So that means the, um, the, the motion is now valid. And you can now go to the, now, we now go to debate. So I'm opening this up for debate. Who wants to talk on this item? Stephen Ball.
So another open ended today, I haven't come with any, yeah, set conclusions. It's always difficult with these sort of umbrella, uh, motions to identify an answer. As I, I watched, there was a, a Mecklen conference on that London. Uh, I would talk in mining, which would include aluminium and copper. And lithium in. And as, as I'm writing things down, would you, uh, I've, I've come across this before. And it's included in ours, for example. Uh, there was an interesting question from the Hexham residents there about where the funds invested. If it's, if it's invested internationally, some of these huge conglomerates, you don't know where the money is invested. And particularly if it was in, I don't know, India or parts of Asia, you would simply not know where, where it was. So, uh, for my understanding of it, uh, the sentiment is plausible and understandable. Actually coming to grips with it, and you may have come, you've got further experience, Mr Mayor than any of us. Actually defining it would be much more difficult than, than simply passing a motion. It's just a comment.
Yeah, um, that's, not definitely. Um, any other, any other?
I, I'm just gonna have a quick one. I'm just breaking this down a little bit. Uh, you've said that investments by the time we are local government pension scheme should be included in the calculations of the town council's government. How, how are we going to do it?
Well, if you know, if you know how much, each, each company has to produce, each company, each company now has to produce its carbon footprint. And what it creates. Uh, if I can answer your question as well, Steve. On the, on the website that lists the information, in fact, I can correct, it's two hundred and thirty eight million is the figure there. On the website actually, this, when you invest, when you have a pension fund, you know exactly what you're investing in. So on this website, I can see. For Northumberland County Council that's investing in Royal Dutch Shell, BP, um, Exon Mobile. So you can see each company. Which, how much money's been invested. For each company, you can then look at their carbon footprint. So like BP, BP will, BP will have to report its carbon footprint. And then you can then basically take. Um, you'd have to have a calculation to say at the moment, time where pension fund invests thirty six million or thirty seven million to BP. You can then look at BP, look at its carbon footprint, and then run a calculation to say, okay, if we've invested thirty seven million to BP. We, we have a footprint, they have a footprint, and we have to put that into our calculations. So you can break down the company, you know how much we've invested. Each company has a footprint, and you can basically work backwards from there.
Okay, but how does that, um, have you calculated the town council's carbon footprint?
Because we, well, we, as Derek said, we have a, if, we have seven staff that pay a pension amount into the London County Council. The London County Council, you know exactly how much money we're putting in into the London County Council in terms of staff pensions. You know how much money is going into Tynanwea.
So you'll be able to tell me exactly how.
Well, it's just a percentage. So if it could be like one percent or two percent, you know, you know how much, we know exactly how much we pay our staff.
I'd just be interested, I'd just be interested in getting that figured out, it would be interesting.
Then you can work backwards from that. All the, all the data's there. And I, I just looked up on here, I can see exactly. Northumberland's invested in BP, Exon Mobile, Shell, it's given me an exact number, so it's, it's there.
And you've mentioned, um, where we lost, and we will have made it. Uh, town council resolves to mandate its representative of the Tynanwea Local Government Pension Committee to call for immediate review. Um, have, have we had any dialogue? Have we written to the, to the, um. Those who do the investments as to why they have this strategy, what is their aim to, to, um, if you like, sort of get rid of their, um. Uh, fossil fuel or whatever investments, because I would have thought that, that, that this is a plan that they have. Because I would have thought that this is a plan that they have already, Derek, you've probably come across that for, that because of the way things have gone, they'll have a strategy, because you can't just walk out with a strategy like that.
That's a good question, Trevor, so I did write to South Tynan Weir Pensions and Pension Millet Jers, and it's Richard Dodd, he's the councillor, and he responded to me and quoted me the policy that Tynan Weir Pensions has. And the policy that they have is, they say, the policy says that basically they want to engage with the fuel companies, and believe engaging in fuel companies is better than divesting. And all the evidence that I've looked at is that basically that the oil and gas industry companies have a record of basically not listening to what, they're all about profit, they won't engage in shareholders' views, they're just totally not the share. So having a policy that says, I'm going to keep my investment to engage with fossil fuels, persuade them to become net zero, has no effect whatsoever.
But if it says devil's advocate here, which means of course I don't necessarily believe what I'm saying.
No, 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 so the motion is basically to get them to revise the policy like the other 50 other councils and universities, because the only way to get them to change is to vote in your feet.
Okay, well, as I said, I've played devil's advocate and just put something to you. What happens if they say that, that they are changing these companies, you know, they're investing in electric, they're investing in this and that and the other, and that they need money to do this, and devil's advocate, I'm just saying that's what I've heard, I've heard people say this before, that they need the investment to be able to change, to be able to meet their carbon neutral, net zero, whatever, targets. I mean, well, that's not my question, that's a question I've heard about other people. So what would you say to that then?
Evidentially, they're just, their track record for the last, was it 1970 that they knew? So for the last 53 years, they knew. So they've confused the marketplace, they've denied climate change. BP were taken to court in Holland and had to try and reduce their factor by 40%, going ahead and opening oil fields. It's like, they're just, they're just, they're trapped, they're just not, and it's like, as I quote, the 50 other councils and universities that are moving.
Are you a representative on the Tynan Weir Local Government Pension Committee?
Sorry?
It just says here, the town council, sorry, the town council, God, I've lost it again. It's representative, resolves to mandate its representative on the Tynan Weir Local Government Pension Committee. I'm saying, so who is our representative on the local pensions committee? Should they be talking not to the officer, sorry, not to the member, you mentioned Richard Dodd before, but they should maybe be talking to the actual, the officers who can give them a clear layout of what their strategy is, whether in fact they are trying to decrease their investment in these areas, or maybe they're not. As you say, if you were to come to me and say, well, they've gone from this much investment down to that much investment, I'd say, well, they're on the right track. If you were to come to me and say, they're still letting, or they're going up, then I would say, no, it's a bit old, you know? So I find it difficult to...
The policy states that they remain engaged, in the policy, I can pull it out, it's like a 40-page post document, it says, the Tynan Weir Pension Fund will not divest from pension fund, its policy is to, its policy is to remain engaged to try and influence them, but that doesn't work.
Right, Paulson?
I just think we need to be making, we would need to be making a statement, the principle really, whether we want to be considered to be part of something where there's investment in fossil fuels or not, might be fundamentally, you know, we can get pointy on it, but do we, or do we not want to be invested in fossil fuels? And if fundamentally the theme is that we don't, then that's why we should be going. There's so many people now who are wanting to make positive changes towards a, sort of, creating a world, a future for the planet, and everybody's trying to do their little bit. What people don't realise is that probably the most influential part of what they can do is where the pension money is invested, and if we can make an influence on that through the town council, then I would consider that to be a positive thing.
Anybody else?
More comments back to Stephen?
I understand the sentiments completely. It's just, and we have to say that, if you're looking at this realistically, it's not going to end by 2025, the programme of bringing in greener energy. So is there an assumption therefore, that if this isn't a deity, like, in 2025, do we actively involve ourselves with disinvestment from these companies? And I'm bold enough to remember people standing and shouting outside petrol stations a number of years ago. Is that ultimately where we see ourselves going as a town council? I just want to, I understand the sentiment, and I'm totally agree with you, Alison, about it's making a big statement that this is unacceptable, but where do we go at the end of it? What's our next protocol? We can complain about it, but is there a strategy that goes on the back of this? And I think that's an important debating point.
Okay. Lee?
So I think, flip the night's head a little bit, the other option of course is just not to bother. I think if you look at the news, it's almost on a daily basis, we're seeing the real urgency of what we're facing. I think given that we've succeeded already in taking our money out of a bank that was fueling fossil fuels, I think this is just a logical next step. There's so many councils, they have, they declare biodiversity climate emergency, but that's it, it's kind of words, and there's a declaration in place, but I think as a council, if we're actually taking active steps to try and influence the direction of travel, that can only be a positive thing. So I don't want us to be the kind of council where we just issue sort of warm words about the climate, but don't actually follow it up with specific action. I think this is one thing that we can do, looking at what's happening, and we really are standing on a precipice at the moment, this is one thing that we can do to try and push this forward, so I'm fully supportive.
Anybody? Talk to us.
I think we have to make a moral argument here for divesting from fossil fuel companies. These companies are, they're not just digging out the oil and the gas that's there, already found, they're actually looking for new places to dig it out of, or to find it. They're increasing the amount of carbon that's in the atmosphere, they're not slowing down at all. If you see any adverts on the television that tells you the vessel's now a green company, that's just greenwashing, that's just nothing, that's propaganda. What they're actually doing is destroying the planet that we live on. The work that these companies do is, they're setting the human race on a route to destruction. This is the only planet we've got, not unless you call Elon Musk and you're going to fly off in a rocket somewhere. The rest of us have stood here, we've got to make the best of it, and we're not making the best of it now. We've got to stop fossil fuels being used, not dig anymore out. We've got to cut back on it, otherwise, we're going to have very, very soon irreversible climate change. We've seen the beginning of that now in this country. If you look further afield, you can see horrendous things happening to people all over the world, the fires that we've had, the floods that we've had. This isn't just coincidence, this is caused by fossil fuels. There's going to be rising sea levels. And you might think, well, we're perched on a hill here, that's not going to affect us. But people who live on the coast, they will be affected, they're going to become refugees, English, British refugees, wherever they're going to live, they're going to come and live here. The refugee crisis isn't just about foreign people, other people who are somehow less worthy, it's going to happen to us, there's going to be a massive crisis of refugees from this country. There's going to be flooding, there's going to be droughts. Some of the most productive areas of the world in terms of food are going to be devastated because of climate change, and because climate change is caused by fossil fuels. There's going to be increased wars, because we fight over the fossil fuels and we fight over resources instead of sharing it. Winner takes all in this world. But none of us are going to be winners, we're all going to lose, and we're all going to lose unless we stop using fossil fuels. So let's not subsidise the companies who have huge, huge profits, they don't need, they don't need money from our pension fund, they don't need it. If they wanted to, they could invest in green energy. They don't, not sufficiently, but if they wanted to, they could. There's a moral argument for getting out of fossil fuels as fast as possible. And can I quote Desmond Tutu? He said, people of conscience need to break their ties with the corporations that finance the injustice of climate change. And that's what we need to do, we need to do it now. I hope this council are made of, is made of people of conscience, so let's do it, let's just stop doing it. We're going to put a proposal forward where we're going to ask another project nicely to come out of fossil fuels, please. But we're part of a momentum, we're part of a growing wave of realisation that we can't go on like this anymore, so let's just stop, let's just brought this through and play our small parts.
Right.
The sentiment, hang on, but how do you stop the three biggest polluters, China, Russia, and India?
The biggest polluters are us, not China, you've got, you've got to mark it.
It's going to be great, but the debate is not about, the debate is to be about what's on the table, not about let's not go with the...
Right, well, I'm asking, I don't mind any questions, you know.
As you know, I'm sat there to that part.
But shouldn't this motion include investment by the Chinese, by the Russians?
No, 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 no.
Because our pension funds, forgive me, they're invested in China, they're invested in India, and that's my argument against it, it's so intertwined, perhaps it was done for that reason. I would like to answer, but I think...
It's a tangle, not, you know, they're trying to, so I'll come in now.
Anytime, Stephen, private.
Yeah, yeah. Right, I'll go and see another hammer, right. So I remember getting my solar panels in 12 years ago, and I thought that was a really good idea. Got them in the house, I've had them there 12 years, and they're actually been, I've been very impressed with, you know, obviously based in the north of England, if you think of there, I'm not much sun, but actually, that is. So I've been very impressed with those that they've gave me two, sorry, sorry, two-thirds of my whole electricity for the, for the, for all of my house for the whole year, so that's, you know, I think it's pretty impressive, so that means I've not had to draw off the grid, so it shows you that us as individuals, and certainly I as an individual, have gone down that route, and it does work. So I don't think there's an awful lot of things that us as individuals can do here. I've always said to anybody, if you want to write a motion, try and keep it short, because the more you put in, the more complicated it gets, the more tangled it gets, and the more difficult it is to actually understand, and it gives, and it means people get drawn to various sort of points of this. So I find this motion quite long, and quite lengthy, and actually covers many different things. I wish it had have been a lot shorter, and maybe just in a couple of sentences, and said virtually the same thing without going into all this. I've just, I'm not saying which one I went on to, but I went on to a fossil fuel company, very, very world famous one, and it says, yes, it's, they have said, you know, we've set ambitions for net zero by 2050, fundamentally changing organisations to deliver. You know, they've got an ambition, they want to do net zero across their operations and absolute basis by 2050, that they want to go to net zero on carbon oils and gas production, that they want a 50% cut in carbon intensity of production by a certain date, install methane measurement, la, 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 la. So I think to label fossil fuel companies is like, that they don't do these things, I think is just incredibly too simplistic. I think, I think it may be that certain individuals think that they're not going fast enough, I think would be more of a reasonable statement. But really, what's, the way I look at this, and I was on Northumberland County Council's Pension Committee for many, many years, I was chair of 45, very, very interesting, very, very complicated, and once you dip your toe in the water, that's it. Right, what, this is how I, this is how my simple mind used to break it down, it's like having fresh water, your river is a freshwater, and you think, that's lovely, it's clean, it's all this, but as soon as it pours out the mouth of the river into the ocean, it becomes solid. And that's, that to me is how, any money that you ever invest, and you might have funds that say, oh, the green and this, that and the other, but once it, once it goes down that river and sails into the ocean, it becomes solid, and it becomes grey, and the money just circulates, it becomes part of everything. I think it is very, very difficult to try and say, this is, this is, this is carbon free money, and this isn't, because I think it's just a whole shit and a grid, and you need the whole, the whole world, all the organisations, all the companies, and us as individuals to move it in a certain direction to actually achieve this. Because you kind of just go, it's that, and it's not this, I just think that, it's really simplistic. However, however, what I will say is that, I think this is about the spirit, so I think the spirit, this is about, what Alison said, it's about the spirit, not necessarily the principle, sorry, the principle, not necessarily the practice. So what does that mean? So we, as a town council, have seven employees that are paid, and that's a small amount of pension that is paid into the Local Government Association in Northumberland alongside a handful of other very, very small organisations, and one huge one called the Northumberland County Council. So our split, our split of that money going in, and our split of the investment going in, is like seven individuals divided by the hundreds and several thousand people, you know, so our miniscule percentage that we're putting in here, and the miniscule percentage that, that you would tease out of this to see if that's our carbon footprint, I find that might be extraordinarily complicated, and I don't know how you're going to achieve it, but that's, that'll be hard for you. But us as a town council did sign the carbon, you know, that one quote, you know, the carbon diversity emergency, and so did the county council, and both of those authorities saw, and our board in favour of both of them, so I'm content from that perspective. So I'll support this. I think some of the questions on the statements here are incredibly complicated, and I don't know how you answer them, as in, you know, to do so. But I think just, I think the reality is, is if we do ask them to say, look, can you, you know, have a look at that strategy and see, is it the right strategy, it's not a bargain. But remember, we are a tiny, tiny organisation inside a big thing that the, that Northumberland County Council operates, which is then within the one that's operated by the South Tyneside, that's run by the South Tyneside Board, which is all the other local associations in the North East that have come together. So we are a tiny speck of sand on a beach, is the way I would say, our contribution is in this source, it's not much, but I would, I'll support it, but I have reservations. How are you turning it in? How you turn it into reality, I have reservations. But because we signed the carbon, both here and the county council, I'm, I'm satisfied to support it, I'll bring Trevor.
Yeah, thanks for letting us have another go after your spoken, yeah. Well, you're still agreeing with what I said. No, I do, I do say size is matter, by the way, so, you know, it's a bit of greener sand than the beach, but. Yeah, I, I do have to agree with a lot of what you said there. And the, the, the idea behind this is, is not a bad idea. But, I mean, I would leave it at something along the lines of that the town council mandates its representative to ask for a review of the, of the County Council's investment strategy on fossil fuel. And, you know, and that one would probably say straight away, I'll support, because I do support that. But it's a little bit, as you've said, a little bit too, asks questions all over the place. And, and so I think I'd probably abstain from this, which I don't want to do and I'm very rarely abstain. But I can't vote against it, but there's just a, a, a more precise proposal would have gotten the vote. I'm just leaving it at that.
Yeah, so, so I, 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 I'll, I'll suggest to make here, say, mate, if, if you, because we can do this, right, we can do this tonight. Obviously, you can see that there's a little bit of, yeah. If you reworded that and said something like, Hexham Town Council has signed what was, what was called, the, the, the Climate Emergency Bill?
Yeah.
Like, if, if we said something like, Hexham Town Council has signed Climate Emergency, what was it, by the?
No, declared the climate and biodiversity.
Declared, declared the climate, yeah. So it was something like, Hexham Town Council has, what, what is it, we have?
Declared climate and biodiversity crisis.
Declared climate and biodiversity, I'm just trying to get this right for, for Jane. Biodiversity, climate crisis.
Emergency.
Emergency, yes, that's it, it was emergency, yeah. As has Northumberland County Council. Yeah. Council. To achieve the goals of carbon neutrality. We ask Northumberland County Council to is it reconsider?
Divest.
Well, I, 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 well, I think, I think it's reconsider, reconsider its investment strategies in fossil fuel companies.
I don't think that's so, Derek, I think. It, it, as John pointed out, it's like, it's symbolic, I think. I don't know if they were affected HSBC, but once we moved away from HSBC, some months later. And I knew there was a trend of people moving away from HSBC through the fossil fuels. And then I flew the straw that broke the camel's back, but HSP then announced that it wouldn't divest in more, in more fossil fuels. There are 50 councils and universities.
Yeah, so, yeah, but we're going, we're going down, so we're already talking about, so, so, so what, what would be the word that, that gets you to where you want to be?
You cannot be with the divest.
And I kind of, this actually got from some minutes in agenda from.
So you could consider, consider divesting from.
Could we urge Northumberland County Council to divest?
To what urge?
Request.
Request.
That's a goal that, John, sir. That's a goal that.
Can we not go beyond urge?
Sorry?
Can we not go beyond an urge?
Let's not go beyond, Alison.
Can we not, can we not just follow the request?
So, so, yeah, you have a request, request, so, so request, what will request, request?
You said you wanted a review of the investment strategies in fossil fuel companies.
Requested a, a review of its investment strategy to divest from fossil fuel, yeah? Fossil fuel companies, is that what, is that what you're saying?
The words were immediate review of investment strategy to freeze any new investment in fossil fuel companies and divest direct ownership. If you put request in, I would ignore it.
Well, well, well.
You've just got, you've just got to get to that exact kernel, haven't you, of what, what's the, what you're asking for there? Is, what's your key sentence?
Yes, so basically, review, review investment strategy and freeze any new investment in fossil fuel companies and divest from direct ownership.
Yeah, yeah, but you, but you can't, you, you can't, they're two different things. You've got to review the investment strategy first and then have a new strategy. You can't just go like, I'm stopping 200, 200 companies, because it just doesn't work that way. You have to, you have to review the investment strategy to, to divest away from. To, to, just, because, because, because you're telling somebody about the 200, the investment strategy is a direction.
Okay, so the strategy could be, review the strategy in line with reaching net zero.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then divest from.
No, no, but, no, but that's what your strategy would do, that's an action within your strategy.
Yeah, but then we come up with a strategy, we're saying what we want, aren't we?
We're saying what we want in the strategy, which is specific, we've just got to specify it, because these are the, this is an investment company that worked with numbers and that is broken up specifically.
I, I agree, it's a big word, but I also agree with kind of everything that's in it. I'd like to just stick with it.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to stick with it, I think. Because I got, I got this from another council, they did exactly the same. The full, lengthy, the lengthy motion I put forward was something that another council disconsisted. There was a 30 page document that I went through, that put all the points across. And then I then got to that motion, which is essentially what they used to get their council to, to divest.
Is it, because I think it's only two, because I was like, the first sentence is only one motion and then the second one is a second. It's like, no, it's like, 32 motions of one.
It's just the word and, so.
It is important, because, because, you know, as, as Trevor said, how, how could you, how can you find out all those fossil fuel? Trying to find out that footprint is, is, is mine impossible.
Right, but so, so, so they say they can't find a footprint, but if at the end of it, they didn't come back and say, we've divested from BP, Exxon.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
So that's fine, but I can live with that fact. But then I don't get the footprint, but at least I know the money's not going to the fossil fuel companies.
Yeah, so, so, right, so, I'm trying, I'm trying to, let's try and find a way, yeah, let's try and find a way.
Just to be clear, Derek, the companies, the big companies I'm working for, I work for The Economist and work for CQC. We're using Amazon and Microsoft data centers, huge data centers, we're using regional data centers. I had requests and we had to do work to look at the, the footprint for The Economist magazine, for the Care Quality Commission, for Northern Gas, a big company. Government are mandating to us that we have to actually tell them our footprint. So these companies are mandated by law to tell governments the footprint that they have. And that's a requirement, which is why I know when you go to these companies, they can use it to get that data. So, so, so it is something that they're mandated to, to actually deliver.
Yeah, but the, the, the thing I would go back is, like I said, double counting will happen all over the place then. Because it'll be counted, that, so Tyneside, there'll be counted, at Northumberland County Council, there'll be ten counted by Hexham Town Council.
But then they need to.
Exactly.
No, but that, that has to be secret, that has to be.
So, so, look, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to find, find a way to try and get this through, mate. So what, what, what's the, what's the, what, what you're trying to achieve here is, is you're trying to get Northumberland County Council to change its, its investment strategy to go to non-carbon.
Okay, are you saying you don't like the, the carbon footprint? So to remove the carbon.
I, I, I personally think that tie in onto the, the answer.
Okay, so if I, if we remove the carbon footprint part, it's a takeout. So basically, the motion is investments by the Tinyway Local Government Pension Scheme, should be included. I don't know if I've got that bit then, so. So the investments for the Tinyway Local Government Pension Scheme, the investment in fossil fuel contradicts the ambition to achieve net zero by 2030. Town council resolved to mandate.
Is it not, is it not just like, is it not just the second part, mate? I'm sorry, I've put it across your day. It's not just, it's not just this, it's not just this, the town council resolves to mandate.
Okay, right, yeah, but the second bit, I can't read you then, yeah. So town council resolved to mandate, to mandate its ambition to, to mandate its representative to the town, which has a council committee to call for an immediate review of its investment strategy to freeze any new investments in the top 200 publicly traded fossil fuel companies and divest from direct ownership from any commingled funds.
I, I, I think.
So that's up to that second sentence then, it'll be the first sentence. And the sentence that starts with town council results to mandate all the way up to corporate bonds.
Yeah, are you content to change it?
I'm content to change that, Derek.
John, are you content to second the change? Right, okay, so we are back to where we were, I will not go on the debate with you.
So what was you saying there?
It's up to you, so I'm sick of talking, John. Right, so on that basis, is there any?
Can you read it out, you?
I'll read it, I'll read it. The town council resolves to mandate its representative on the town and the local government pension committee to call for an immediate review of its investment strategy to freeze any new investments in the top 200 publicly traded fossil fuel companies and divest from direct ownership and any
commingled.
Commingled funds that include fossil fuel, public equities and corporate bonds by 2025. Does that, is everybody more content with?
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I think that would be as well.
You need for a check, Derek.
I see it going, going for that one. Right, so on that basis, mate, are you content?
Yeah, I'm content.
John, you're content? Okay, right, on that basis. Yeah, exactly, on that basis, those in favour of the proposal, please put a hand up. Okay, we have you now, so.
Oh, Derek.
Sorry for, sorry for giving you grief there, mate, but it was worth it. Because it gets it through, gets it through. As I say, always go, go, go stronger on your motion. Right, thank you, there's an answer, right. There's an answer, that's right, keep busy, keep busy, keep busy. Right, so the highlight of the last period has been a trip to Mettingen with the town twin, town twinners of Hexham, where we met our German colleagues for the first time in 20, since 2018. I met with the burgomaster common of her rock and she was delightful. Me and her just got on a house on fire, it was really, really nice to get on with her, just wonderful person. You know, the hospitality that that thing provided to us was just excellent. I think there was a lot of good relationships set up. And we look forward to seeing Mettingen in Hexham with our guests in 2024. So that was a fabulous thing, really enjoyed that. We also met with, on the same event, there was a Hungarian contingent from Mettingen's town twin, twinning neighbors and also from our joint town twinners in Noyon in France. So it was nice to meet those people again there. So it's also, you know, really, really good, lots of good relationships set up, so. I also went to the town twin pre-event, just so we, just to get them organized. So I gave, I gave them gifts of, they got the 800 Hexham Mob Place flag, so that's now flying in Germany and Hungary. They got a cup of Hexham Abbey, they got a book of the, of Adrian's Wall and, and so, so we got plenty of gifts in there, so. I went to the park run quiz night, where they were doing a fundraiser, I was doing an annual fundraiser, so that was, that was a good evening. They go and strike to strike the park runners, it's really good to see. I visited, I was asked to do a speech on the Museum of the Moon. So I was, you know, seeing that in its, all its glory, it was just fantastic. And it was fantastic to see that it's been so popular, as I mentioned, there's been 5,000 visitors so far, so it's, it's been going great, goes. And if you haven't seen it, please do, it's a sensation. I visited Hexham House's nuclear fallout bunker, which was quite interesting. Councillor Alison Smith, Councillor Suzanne Yeakin also attended along with the Civic Society and various others. But while I've been at Hexham House many, many times, and it was time to district council, I've never been in the, in the, in the bunker. I don't know if you've been in before, Trevor.
Yeah, I've been, yeah, it was called the Bollingbury.
Yes, 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 yes. So, yeah, so, yeah, so I've been stuck on, stuck on that, under there for a little bit, for time, obviously. I played the tennis finals, not as a male, I've got to be. So upcoming, upcoming, what we have, we have some, some really fantastic things coming up very soon. So we have, one of the big ones, this, this coming up is spook night, so that's on Saturday the 28th. Did you see you were doing it?
I wasn't going out, so it's now, yes, I'll be doing my 250th park run on that day, you'll all be invited to join, even that, I said.
That's in the moment, though. She's not quite satisfied with it, she's not quite satisfied with it.
21st of October, I'll be attending the Hexham Cinema Forum Cinema, where I'm doing some awards for some of our special needs people there, so I look forward to that. The 4th of November is fireworks night, so obviously that's the first time Hexham Town Council has taken ownership of that. That should be, that would be the big thing. And we also have the remembrance services on the Saturday and Sunday, the, I think the 10th, isn't it, Sunday this year? No, so the 12th is the remembrance Sunday, the 12th of November. So there's an awful lot of things happening between now and the next town council. I was also interviewed by a Danish reporter who came through in Copenhagen, a guy called Nils Boerschet-Holm, Lyle's Boerschet-Holm, who had flown last one interview, because he was doing some journalism and video work on the loss of Sigmund Gård, obviously it's been international news, it's been on the national, in the national news and obviously they're quite interested in people's reaction to the loss of such an icon. I did have a chat with the chief executive of Northumberland National Park, they'd gone and visited a tree. Last week, this was a sad, sad sight to see, but what a loss to, to us as a, as a, as a town, as a district, as a region and as a country, actually. The most famous tree in Great Britain, I guess, Sigmund Gård, Sigmund, that's very sad. Right, so go on to the next one, to agree the council are paying it. So we got.
Six.
Page six, yes, page six. Page six, page seven, page eight. To note the draft minutes of the council meeting is now, so we're looking at pages. Page 34, which is the Finance and General Purposes Meeting. Page 34, 35, 36. What I will mention is that we have interviewed for an apprentice and we have one person who is being offered and we're currently going through a background check on that person, so hopefully we may be able and we can hopefully get them through, may be on a, on a one day a week. They will be on a, on a Monday, we can, based we had interviewed for a second, an apprentice also, who had originally asked to take the job and then as the post keeper felt, so that there will be another job I will have in time for, for an apprentice to help of some of this stuff. So the next item is Planning Infrastructure Meeting of the maintenance September. Page 37, 38, 39, 40. The FNGP of Finance and General Purposes Meeting of 20th of September. Page 41, 42. And then the Community Engagement Remembrance Subcommittee on page 43, October 4th of the week. That, the clock for correspondence?
Right, you received correspondence relating to Nalk E News, Cam E News, Northumberland CVA Support Services, Services E bulletins, Temporary Traffic Regulation Orders relating to Broadgates, Clivers Place and Elveston Road, the Chrisleys Club October Programme, Town Halling Community Rail Premiership News, a funding e-bulletin, an invitation to the Hexham Living Wage Event at the Torch Centre on the 14th of October, Queen's Hall 40th Anniversary and Art Centre Event on the 11th of October, the In Blue Awards, Hexham Techie Tea Party on the 18th of October, an idea regarding the fell tree of Sycamore Gap, the Thriving Together Newsletter, an NCC consultation on the extension of the Public Spaces Protection Order, a letter asking for support for the Climate and Ecology Bill due for a second reading on the 24th of November, the North of Time Mayor's Question Time Event on the 24th of October on how de-d pollution can help achieve net zero, and an invitation to Hexham Community Led Housing Discussion on the future uses of a former HMS site also on the 24th of October.
Very good, okay. The meeting ended.
One, one last one for the man. Jane, I'm going to interrupt you on this. It's Jane's 250th park run every Tuesday and she's asked.
Two weeks, almost.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, sorry. She's asked for volunteers. I've already been coerced into a park run, I'd be delighted to know.
Oh, I'm scared, dude. You got my breath?
Somebody dropped out, actually. I will have a back. Will it be such a momentous, momentous occasion for Jane? She's inviting some other family down, getting dressed up and some of us might go along with us in fancy dress for the spook night. I certainly and Tom Pearson will be making one in. I think Jane would want to invite the rest of the town council, is that correct?
I will do, yes. I'm already volunteering that week as town walker. So anybody who wants to just walk, if you're walking, we'll be at the back. Anybody who wants to run it is also welcome. You need to get registered first if you're not up there. It's on for nine o'clock, Saturday, the 28th of October.
Oh, you have Trevor? You're making one in?
Okay, you've got.
Very disappointed, Trevor.
I was meant to.
Thank you.
Very good. Excellent, okay.